I'd like to call the City of Dallas's Council Work Session in order for Tuesdays at 6:00 P. M. 2023. First thing on the agenda is a rule call.
Council President Chilling.
Here.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Beriantos?
Here.
Counselor Briggs?
Here.
Counselor Collins?
Over here.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
I'm back.
Counselor Jants?
Here.
Counselor Shane?
Here.
Counselor Verden?
Here.
Thank you.
First thing on the agenda is the Finance Annual Update. I assume that Cecilia.
And Mayor, if she comes up, just a reminder for the council to speak into your microphones tonight. You can tell there's audio working. So just make sure you're speaking into your microphones.
Does this one need to be pulled forward too? Okay.
And pointing down.
Like that? Okay. And I see our little TVs working too. How nice. Okay.
Don't have to turn your head anymore.
I know. This is gonna be great. I'll have to remember. I don't have to turn. Okay. Well, thank you for having me this evening. It's been a year, so we'll talk about Finance and Municipal Court for another year. We'll start with the Finance Office. And just for the new council, that members that have not seen this presentation, I wanted to introduce you to our Finance Office. And you can see, we have four and a half FTE down in the Finance Office. And we, it's just a really great group of people that we get a lot done down there. And then here on this slide is some new, the new happenings that happened over the last fiscal year. And we transitioned, as many of you know, Umpqua Bank took over Columbia Bank. So we, the city has our accounts with Columbia Bank. So we had to transition to Umpqua Bank. It was pretty easy. We had some new websites to go to, some new software to implement. But they held our hands and were almost done. We have one more item to transition to Umpqua. So it took a little time. Also, this year, we have a new audit firm by the name of Singer-Lueck. And we've been working with them since July. They had their interim visit to us in July. We're also working with Marina and Company still this year. This year, we've implemented what the, they said that those, those firms that do the audit cannot do the financial statements. So the Marina and Company, they'll be doing our financial statements, but Singer-Lueck will be doing our audit. So we're working with two firms this time around, so that'll be a little bit different. And then, we're also implementing Gatsby 96. For short, it's called SPIDA. So every now and then, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board comes out with a new pronouncement that every, all governmental entities have to read. It's a new accounting and financial reporting. And the SPIDA is, stands for Subscription-Based Information Technology Arrangements. So we have to do accounting and financial reporting on these subscription-based IT arrangements. So for example, we, so this has been kind of a long process during the spring. We've had to go through all the contracts and agreements with anything to do with information technology. So we boiled it down. There's some specifics, like if it was more, if the contract is more than one year, then this would apply. And there's lots to it. But we came down, we narrowed it down to about four or five agreements that we have that fall into the SPIDA. So we are going to have to do the accounting and financial reporting this year for those. And one good example is our Google accounts, our Gmail accounts. Those are on a three-year contract, I believe. So they do not expire after a year. So that is an example of one of these information technology arrangements. So those are some of the new happenings that has, that have happened over this past fiscal year and continuing on into this fiscal year. Some of the things that we've been doing this last fiscal year, we continued, I had this slide, half of this slide up last year, where you had just implemented going to a new radiometer reading system. And now we are half, halfway there. Half of all water meters have been fitted with new radios and are now in the new system. So there, so this is in conjunction with our water department, because they have to install the new radios. So we kind of go as fast as they can. So, but it's really helped with our utility billings. So we're just anxious to keep going with it, and hopefully we'll get to the end of that. Also, as you know, we implemented new water rates for the next three years. And then I also wanted to include some customer, water customer statistics on how many bills for the month of June of each year have gone out. And you could say, see that back in 2018, we started with 5273. And now we have almost 6,000 accounts now. So, so as any, everything else, we're growing. Yes.
Why are we installing new radios?
So there were, I don't want to really talk for the water department, but there were some issues with those old radiometers. They've just kept going out. I mean, every two or three months, they were just not-
They were costing a lot of maintenance, really a lot.
A lot of maintenance. They were not reliable. And so, so the water department went out and received a quote for new radios. They were given some credit for these old ones. And it was a whole big process. So-
So we're operating at 100%, but we're replacing, we've replaced half so far.
Correct. Yes, yes. The other system does, does work for some of the meters. But the goal is to get them all replaced, because they're unreliable. And let's go on to the next one. So one of the big accomplishments, again, along with the water department, we both worked on our new bulk water filling station. And it has been a dream. We love it. And since, we implemented it first of June, and we already have 54 customers. And so far, we have sold 301,000 gallons of water, which is a, I mean, it doesn't account to a whole, a whole lot. But just kind of to give you some statistics, and we've almost made about 8,000 in revenue on that. And that's just since the beginning of June. And I noticed last year, for the whole fiscal year, I think we, the revenue was about 12,000. So this is, you know, we're only three months, although it was the hottest month. But we're tracking pretty good with it. And I just wanted to give you some pros for our water station. Eliminated any chance of stealing water, because they have to have a code, and they have to be updated with the payment for the water. And so they, so before, it was just, they could go down and get water without even paying for it, and then to track it. It was all handwritten. So this, it really eliminates all that.
Question, since we know how much, I assume even with the old system, we knew how many gallons we were giving out. So do you have a handle on how much fraud, for lack of a better term, there was?
Well, you know, it was on the honor system, so it was really hard to track. We just know that about a week before this was implemented, there was a truck down there that didn't write down how many gallons they'd been sold.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. If you know how many gallons you sold, and you know how much money you collected, you should be able to calculate the delta.
Yeah, we could. We just never have.
Do you have just a ballpark idea?
I really don't. No, I don't.
So Counselor Shane, that-
We just haven't gone into that.
That also assumes we have the same customers, and they're using the same amount of water from one year to the next. And it varies.
True.
You know, just the number of customers, how much water they need. And so it's not a, it's not a, there's no easy way to figure out that. But what we did know is that the-
It's not gonna happen anymore.
The honor system maybe has some holes in it.
Yeah.
And that the system doesn't allow for that.
Right, right.
Can you remind me, this was paid for by the harbor funds?
It was, yes.
And did we come in at or under or over budget?
Yeah, we came in about 12,000 under.
Oh, good.
Because we, I think we-
Good job.
-who approved about 60,000 for it, it came in about 47, 48.
Is there a limit on how many, how much water a person can take?
We can limit that. We haven't yet, because we don't, most people only have a, what is it, a thousand gallon, not even a thousand gallon tank, 500 gallon tank. So most, most customers don't purchase very much. So we haven't really had to limit it yet.
Yeah, my impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that in terms of our total water consumption, no pun intended, this is basically a drop in the bucket. So it's insignificant.
It is. It is. Exactly. It is. And then a couple more pros to this water station. We eliminated a half of a filing drawer, because we eliminated having to keep paper applications in water slips. So hey, that is, we're so excited. And I'll show you the next slide. I'll show you how I'm, how I'm excited about getting rid of paper. And then staff time to process bulk water applications was cut by about 75%. It just doesn't take long anymore, because they, the customers can go online, apply for it. We just, and then we email them back with a code. And then from then on, they could just add money to their account online. So it's very easy. Our next accomplishment, although it's ongoing, is electronic file retention. We, we were going to start it on the last presentation I gave. We were just jumping into it. But so far, our biggest accomplishment, we scanned in 15,500 pages of payroll files. And payroll files usually have a 75-year retention on them. And so that was our biggest push, to get those long retention items in there. And so, and then accounts payable invoices, we, we have scanned about 8,000 into our accounting system. And so anybody could go into a vendor, pull up a vendor, and look up an invoice. We don't have to go pull a paper invoice to go to get to them. So it's very, very, it's a time saver. And then you could see some of the smaller papers that we have scanned in. And we have some, we have like some insurance documents. We have bond documents. All those we want to get scanned in. So we have a long road ahead of us, but we're cleaning up. It's really nice downstairs. So we'll be continuing that project. So a little bit on municipal court. Like I said, I included some information on our employee. First, we have our court administrator. She's our only employee in municipal court. And then the rest are either on contract. And so that would be our municipal court judge, Jonathan Clark, if you did not know. And then our city prosecutor is Mo Brown. And so they're on contract. And then we have three pro temp judges. And they, all three of those judges served at no cost to the city. So when the municipal court judge, Judge Clark has to take a Thursday off, we have court on Thursdays, he just calls one of the judges, and they come out and, and kind of fill in for him, but at no cost to us. So it's really nice. And then we have three court-appointed attorneys, and they are assigned to defendants. Usually one court-appointed attorney is assigned to a set of defendants, and then they come once a month to have, to have pre-trial cases, conferences. And so that's kind of makes up our court. And this one, oh no, it's better on the big screen. These are just some court stats compared to last year. I just want to point out that our misdemeanor violations, which are mostly crime violations, have increased. You can see the top five misdemeanors from last year totaled 171. And this past fiscal year, they were at 244. And Kim, our court administrator, she just told me that calendar year-wise, since January, she has already filed 182 misdemeanors. So, so those things are a little bit on the rise. You can see, for instance, like theft three and criminal trespass has really grown. So just kind of an idea, you kind of get from these statistics, you know, what the police department's busy with.
Yeah. You probably can't answer this?
Maybe not. I don't know. Maybe Brian?
You might need to answer this. Do we know why the numbers in criminal trespass have doubled? I don't know. I don't do math that fast. You do the math. But they're a lot bigger.
Oh, I know. Oh, I pulled some of these stats, and I'm like, whoa.
I don't think you know the answer to why.
Yeah, I don't. No, that's definitely-
I can probably give some anecdotal statements to that, but I'd rather dig into that question than-
Could we, yeah, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Do you, do our officers have discretion which court they use? Or is it Measure 11 crimes goes to circuit court, and then all the other crimes or violations go to, you know, school?
Correct. I'm not sure of the level. Tom's not in here.
It's not Measure 11. We prosecute city offenses and state traffic offenses in city court. Mister meter. So all felonies go to circuit court, whether they're Measure 11 or not. And if there's a charge of a misdemeanor that's not, that is a state court, a state charge, not a city court, I'm glad to go to circuit court as well.
Thank you. Okay, yeah. I always forget what goes over there. Okay, thank you. So to wrap us up, just a little look ahead. There, there's my picture of continual electronic records retention. So we're gonna keep on scanning. And then also, as, since many of you are new, this year, we have to work with the new auditors to continue to earn our GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. It's called the ACTFOR Awards. So, and this city, we're on our, like, what, 28th year or something of receiving this award. So we'll be moving forward and trying it again. And thank you very much. And if you have any more questions.
Any questions for Cecilia?
You're good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You go.
Next is the city manager's annual update.
Y'all have to bear with me for a minute, because I need to log in. Not two cheese.
Does it help that we're all staring at you? That always makes me type better.
Well, there's nothing else to look at. Dead air.
Well, while you're signing in, who, who took that picture on our landing page, homepage?
That was done by John Schultz.
I was gonna guess it was Johnny.
It's just gorgeous.
He's a wonderful photographer. He's really, really good. Yeah.
I was forgetting the step.
Thank you, insurance company.
I just read an article that they think within five years, the technology will be good enough, that they will be able to hear your keystrokes and know what you typed in for your password.
Interesting.
Crazy.
John Schultz also serves on the planning division.
Well, he did a fantastic-
He's good.
Fantastic job.
He's good.
All right. So thank you, Mayor Woods and City Council. I'm Brian Ladd. I'm the city manager for the City of Dallas. I'm gonna give the annual report for this last year. So just quickly, this is our organizational chart. So of course, you're the mayor and the council. You hire me as your city manager through the box in blue. You also hire by contract a city attorney and municipal judge, as our finance director just talked about. Under my kind of purview is several employees. The assistant city manager, Emily Gonyer, the police chief, Tom Simpson, the fire chief, April Wallace, our economic and community development director, Charlie Mitchell, our library manager, Mark Johnson, and then our communication specialist, Allison Robins, Rob Roberson. Underneath Emily Gonyer is our public works director, Gary Marks, and our finance director, Cecilia Ward, and our city recorder, Kim Herring. The colors are intentional. The people identified in green are department heads. And then the people in the blue are employees in the city manager's office, outside of Emily, who's also in the city manager's office. All right. So duties in the city manager's office. There are lots of things that we do. One of the primary things we do is we do the strategic planning and implementation of city council policies and directives. So again, we're here as a city manager's office to serve you and the, and the public. And that's one of our, our main objectives. We also perform all the administrative functions, human resources, risk management, and employee relations. The city recorder is in our office, does records management, codification, and elections, and just general administration for all, all things the City of Dallas. And then budget preparation and management. As the city manager, I'm your budget officer for the city. And that's one of the things that we do. And then we make sure that the budget's being spent appropriately, working closely with our finance department. And then lastly, communications. This last year, we hired Allison Roberson, our communication specialist, to work in our office. And she's been doing a really good job of being able to improve and be more frequent with citywide communications. Oh, there's one more. Staff support for city council and committees. All right. So this last year, one of the main things we've been doing, especially recently, is these general fund road shows. So in order to have that road show even take place, we completed the work necessary to initiate a petition process for a Parks and Recreation District, if the council decides to move forward with that. We've been gathering signatures and doing other work necessary to make that a possibility. Next is we've evaluated and determined four solutions to address general fund, the general fund forecast and the decline that we're seeing. We conducted and have planned a total of 30 presentations. Many of you have been involved, if not all of you, in at least one or two of those. And we received about 177 feedback cards to date. We still have, I think, four more presentations. Those are more town hall style at the schools. We anticipate having good crowds for those. And so we should be able to get well over the 200 mark on the feedback cards. We've been very busy on the recruitment front. This year, like last year's report, was similar. We've hired 66 employees since September 1st of last year, replacing 52 separations. Now, you might ask yourself, why so many more employees over last year? That additional staffing was in the Fire and EMS department as flexible schedule employees, and the Dallas Aquatic Center as lifeguards. So we did not increase the amount of payroll, you know, necessarily. What we did, as we just said, for these positions that are part-time positions, we were able to fill more of those. And as you heard from Ann Heard, lifeguards are needed. And we're happy to report that we have added lifeguards at the aquatic center. So-
So that's 14 more people, but that's not 14 FTEs.
It's not 14 FTE, and it's not, so that's 14 additional bodies, except, you know, most of those being part-time, in terms of the addition beyond those that were separated from the city. So yeah, so we've been very busy doing that. And kudos to Emily for all her, her hard work there. We are continually actively seeking additional police officers. That still tends to be a position that is proving difficult to fill, not only in Dallas, across the country. I meet with city managers often, and that's something that we lament about, is the inability to get qualified, qualified police officers in our forces. Those that we have are qualified. They're great. But finding new ones is proving very difficult.
How far under strength are we at the moment?
Three parole, three patrol positions.
Wow.
Yeah. And now we have, we have three that are at the academy right now. So we're actually six short in the field. So our officers are working lots of extra shifts and not being able to take vacations right now.
That's a real constraint.
It is. Yeah.
On the officers, have you looked at rehiring retired officers, or bringing them back just in a limited capacity?
Yes. And the state legislature has continued to give us that gift of being able to rehire parish retirees. We have taken advantage of that. And we have at least three employees that I'm aware of on our department that are working back. Yep. We're also actively seeking additional flexible schedule employees for the EMS services, as well as the aquatic center. So we've added some, but we can always add more, and we continue to do that as well. All right. This last year, we also implemented the Dallas U, if you remember. That is a kind of a citizen academy-type program that's designed specifically for city employees. So that way, we're not kind of operating all in individual silos, right? A public works employee now understands what happens in finance. And a parks employee understands, you know, what happens in the city manager's office. And it's been a really good program. We've been able to bring employees from all the different departments together. They go through a two, a two-day program over the span of two weeks, a half day each day. It's been received really well. Our first class graduated from the two-day program in August of last year. And all new hires and existing employees are required to attend the Dallas U. And so far, we've graduated 29 of our employees through this program. So we normally hold this every three months, so once a quarter. And we're able to get through usually seven to eight employees each round. So it's been, it's been very successful. We usually have a waiting list to get into this program from our employees. And so it's been very good. Leadership Dallas, you're familiar with this program, as we brought in some, well, the graduates from that program this last year. The first years in the books were done. You'll notice that the logo this year is new. One of our participants created the new logo for this next year. You'll see, it's an LD looking in the shape of a D. So it's Leadership Dallas. We thought that looked great. This program's a professional community leadership development and networking program. We generally send through about 15 participants. It's a nine- Last year, we graduated 13 of the 15 participants. Two of them dropped out, one, work became too much of a conflict, and the other one moved out of the state during the program, so. But those that stuck with it graduated, and year two is, has been planned by the year one participants. So that's part of their leadership training and development is to now lead the year two programming. And so that's been great. We're set to begin October 2023, and we're actively seeking applicants right now, and we expect to fill that up no problem. Year in review, we also have transitioned to the Oregon Records Management System. Cecilia talked about all the great records that they've updated, so ours in comparison is much smaller, but I'll tell you what we've done so far. It does allow us to electronically store all of the city's documents, meaning we can be able to get rid of the paper. Automated destruction process, which is consistent with the record retention schedules. So we, once we upload a document into the ORMS, we set the retention schedule at that time, and then the state, through their records management system, will automatically destroy those documents when the time comes. So it's a big time saver for us on the backend of not having to track these documents and they get stuffed in a box, and we never pull them out, and then we have documents from 90 years ago when they were only a five-year retention, right? So this, this system is really slick, we really like it, and we're able to really eliminate all the paper that we're holding on to in our offices and desk drawers and in the basement, so. City staff are and will be trained on the system. Finance, like you heard, has done a lot of the work. Our office has been trained, other admin professionals in other departments have been trained as well. And over 400 of our documents in the City Manager's Office have been scanned into that system and set for retention schedules. Youth Advisory Council is underway. We did recruitment of this back near the end of the school year of last year. And so this is, we refer to it as YAC, which is why we have a picture of a YAC. And it really is a program that's designed for a council of Dallas youth to recommend issues and solutions to the City Council and engage youth in local civics. We have five participants so far, and they're all engaged and excited. In fact, four of them have come to multiple meetings to try to get more people here, so it's been, it's been great. And I look forward to working with those five kids, and hopefully we can get additional students into the program. That's both for middle school and high school age youth. Meetings are during the school year. We've yet to schedule what those meetings will look like, but I do think with the early release schedules, there's opportunity to maybe do it on Tuesdays immediately after school, which would be more of a daytime activity, but it would fill a void that's being created by the new scheduling at the schools. So this last year, for the work that you do, since again, the City Manager's Office is your staff, you have approved seven ordinances and 20, 22 resolutions since September of last year. A few of those items was the master fee schedules been updated. It's great to have that all in one place, so that when we look at updating our fees, we can do them all at once. You've adopted the five-year strategic plan, you've increased water and stormwater rates, you've approved an interfund loan to purchase the former Bank of America building. Ordinances have been for zone changes and annexations predominantly this last year. As the Urban Rural Agency, which is something else that you do, you've approved three resolutions, including the purchase of the former B of A building and the creation of the South Dallas Urban Rural District Advisory Committee, which is the Economic Development Commission of the city. That's it.
Any questions?
I have a question. I think I remember, the person that is the staff in charge of the YAC is your connection?
Yes. Yep, I'm the staff person for that, and so, and there, this group of five that I have, they already have really good ideas of what they want to do, issues that they see in the city, issues that they see at the school, and I've really said, look, if you want to address a school issue, I have no problem teaching you how to go to the school board meeting and present that to them. It doesn't have to be city-related. More than anything, I just want them to be comfortable and familiar with how to engage in their community. And so, yeah, but I mean, some of the issues that they've brought up that they want to try to tackle are city issues, and so it'll be fun. I'm looking forward to that.
Good.
Are we going to have some opportunity to be able to interact with them and find out about these things, meet them?
Yes. Yes, so I will encourage each of the Youth Advisory Council members to participate with the council, sitting in this chair here that's just currently vacant, have a name, placard form, and everything, so that they can sit in on meetings like this, and that'll be on a rotational basis, you know, for those that want to participate in that way.
If they have ideas for, as you indicated, for things that they think we should be working on, you're probably several steps ahead of me on this, but what about having them come into presentations on the issues they care about?
Yes, so if they have recommendations that they want to make, I will encourage them to, you know, and we'll work on putting a presentation together, and then have them come in and present that to the City Council prior during the work session. Yeah, so I mean, I, I think that they will have a really good time with that. It's something that I think it's, you know, just good engagement for them. They're looking at as opportunities for, you know, to be able to write this in their college essays and other things like that. Letters of recommendation from the City Manager, I think are probably okay. No, it'll be good, and I think that they're, the students that we have are understanding what it is and kind of what they want to get out of it, and I think it'll be a good process. Fun program.
Any more questions for the head YAC? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the Development Code Update. My guess it's Chase.
It is.
Who wants to talk?
Yeah. Thanks. Hello, everyone. Chase Bellus, City Planner. Let me pull up this PowerPoint here, and we'll get started with the workshop.
You're not used to looking straight ahead yet either.
Oh, so I can't really see the font on that one. It's a little too small.
When you're doing that, you need to look at the side.
Okay.
I was gonna say you're looking at me, but I know you're not.
Well, being able to see it is definitely a lot more useful than having to turn my head. We used to, back in the day, have the laptop that we used, and then we went to the big screens on the side, and we lost the laptop, and so having a screen again is super helpful. So yes, this is a work session on the Development Code Updates, and so there's three kind of key sections. There were eight sections that the City Council indicated they wanted to have further discussion on, and so these are kind of the first three that we'll have a discussion on. We'll have more workshop sessions in the future to discuss the remaining topics, but wanted to kind of break it into manageable chunks for you, so without further ado, temporary signs in the right-of-way was kind of our first section here. And so the, the city has been somewhat restrictive in terms of what we allow for signage kind of generally, addressing what they call sign clutter. So we've, we've enacted rules that limit pole signs, we limit off-site signs, so it's kind of billboard sort of signs. We have limits on garage sale signs, and we have limits on sidewalk signs. We do allow all of these things to certain extents, but there's limitations on them to make, you know, a more attractive community, kind of limiting that clutter. And so one of the topics that's come up then with the sidewalk signs specifically is that they are, why is this not advancing? There we go. The current standard does not allow signs to be placed at the street corner. This is also related to the kind of the prohibition on off-site signs, because the street corner doesn't really belong to any particular property. There have been a number of signs that have been placed at property, at street corners around town. We haven't really been enforcing on that, which is kind of a policy decision, it's kind of a resource availability decision. And so based on that, we're looking at kind of removing sort of that entire prohibition from the code, removing the prohibition on placing signs at the street corner. So, yeah, I don't know what kind of discussion you all would like to have on that, but that's the end of the slideshow for that, that first topic there.
And if I can just jump in before we ask questions on this, so I don't want to have you feel that we don't enforce our code provisions just because, right? We got a request through the Development Code Update process from a person who was enforced on putting a sign in the corner, and we said, hey, we're going through this Development Code Update, why don't you, you know, write a testimony if you want that change, and we can incorporate that into the Planning Commission, City Council Decision Making Process? So once they did that, I kind of put a temporary stay on enforcement of those signs until the council decides that policy decision. So that's where the lack of enforcement came from. It didn't come because, you know, Brian thought it was a bad idea to have this rule in place or anything like that, so just to clarify that.
Well, I have a question, not, not about this section, but about the entire presentation. When do you anticipate this will come to us for a decision?
So as Chase mentioned, you have eight issues that you identified at the last time you looked at the whole code package together. We're tapping three of those tonight. Depending on how fast or slow you get through those tonight, we're anticipating three work session meetings, so tonight, the 18th, and then again on October 2nd. And then if you've been able to get through all the, all of the code provisions by then, then we'll bring it back to the public hearing, the second meeting in October.
Oh, all at once?
All at once.
Okay.
Regarding this, isn't this a change mainly brought about by the way our ADA ramps are now installed?
That I could not speak to.
Because I think in, it used to be all the ADA ramps used to come right off the corner, and now they're all, we have that nice spot like your, your picture shows. Do you have that picture? The one that's in our, in ours, that shows it's a great place to put a sign, it's not in the way of any pedestrians. Say what?
A sign.
A sign, yes. Not the street corner.
Yeah, for the record, I think this is a very beneficial change, because it's good for business. I haven't had one single person ever complain to me about, well, the particular example that you show a picture of. I've never heard a complaint about it. And yeah, you don't want five or six or 10 or 20 of them, but when you have like one on a street corner, like in the example, not only is it good for business, it makes the downtown look a little bit more busy and a little bit more active, like there's more going on, which is good in a lot of ways, so I'm in favor of this one anyway. Kirsten?
How will we decide the number of signs permitted, and then who gets preference for that spot? How is that all going to be managed, so that we don't end up with that picture?
So there, there is no provision for permitting of temporary signs. They're sort of allowed outright, they're exempt from sign permit requirements. So there isn't like a permit that we issue, the way that we issue permits for permanent signs, so.
Well, and the way this is written, there isn't going to be room for very many in one place, because you've got a very circumscribed, small area where, where this would permit them, so you're not going to get 10 or 20 in that space, they just won't fit. Debbie?
Yeah, I'm more concerned about the size of the signs. I really don't think there's, I don't care how cluttered it is with a whole bunch of signs, it's more things for people to see as they drive by or walk by. Not all of our corners, like when I look out here, there's a huge section that they could put signs, but if they're very tall, for someone short like me driving, it limits my visibility when I'm turning. I mean, quite a bit, because I also have a pretty small car, not quite a flat car, but close. So I don't, I don't mind the lots of signs, but I'm more concerned about the size of them, and not all of our corners are like this. I mean, we, we still have many neighborhoods that don't have proper sidewalks for mobility that's necessary for people who have any mobility issues. I mean, I've seen people fall over on Court Street, fully sober, mind you, along the sidewalks, because they're like this for routes, so even the corners, not all of them have this little.
You should.
Area for signs.
Yeah, so I can address a couple of those things, and while Chase looks up the code, we do limit the height of temporary portable signs to four feet.
Three feet.
Three feet, sorry, three feet. So we already have a height limit on these types of signs. So the size, and do we have a square footage dimension on those two, Chase?
Six square feet.
So it can be six square feet in size, right? So three feet tall, two feet wide is the dimensions of the size of the sign, so that's how big each sign could be. There's a couple of ways you can get it quantity, right? You can put in a provision that says, we allow one temporary portable sign, you know, on the street corner where it's not blocking pedestrian, you know, walking path. So as Michael mentioned, we do have some intersections where the ADA ramp is at the actual corner, you wouldn't be able to put one there. But in the downtown area, like the example shown in your staff report, that could accommodate a sign, and you could even limit it to one signs allowed there, and it's basically on a first come, first served basis, right? Because these have to be taken down each night and put up each day.
That's in the code somewhere?
Yes. And so, you know, whichever business opens up first or goes out and puts up their sign, they get it for that day. And then the next day, it could be the next business that, you know, goes in. That would be regulated through the businesses, and if there was some sort of dispute on that, they can come talk to us, and we would tell them, here's how you guys need to resolve that. You know, first come, first served.
Get up earlier.
Get up earlier, right? Whoever gets up earliest is the winner. And so, you know, there's ways of going about limiting the number of signs if you want, but right now, as Chase pointed out, you wouldn't have a limit. We're not talking about establishing the sign permit for the corners. So if, you know, the example here you have is the Crystal Mirror, but let's say the decorated wall also wanted to put a sign there, and they put it next to the Crystal Mirror, there's probably room for at least two signs, if not three. And so if we took out the prohibition as it's written today, we would allow up to, you know, as many signs as could fit within that area. If you want to limit that, then you need to tell us how many you want within that area, and we can incorporate that text into the code.
I think that how many would depend on the size of the space available.
That's kind of clear in here, and it does say, signs placed within the right-of-way shall not obstruct traffic, so that kind of gets to your concern.
Any more questions?
Are we restricting the signage to businesses on that block, or can anybody put a sign up there?
So that's a great question. We have an example right now of a commercial property on that block that's available for lease, and so the real estate agent is putting out a commercial space for lease, sandwich board sign on the corner, and we're okay with that. But, you know, could, for example, North Dallas Restaurant, you know, place a sandwich board sign down on the corner of Mill and Jefferson? I think that's, would, in my opinion, the answer would be, well, I would defer to lane, really, is what I would do, because we have a prohibition on off-site signs, and so how these temporary signs fit into that, I don't know.
Well, I understood the off-site was going to go away as far as temporary signs goes.
That's not currently part of the proposal, but certainly that could be a subject for discussion.
In that case, I mean, that's just an issue, that if we don't, we're effectively limiting sandwich signs to the corner businesses.
Yeah, exactly.
And once you take away the off-site, prohibition off-site, you can't discriminate based on content, so you'd have to do something like, if you didn't want a North Dallas, a North Dallas business advertising in downtown, you'd need to create some sort of locational standard.
I was gonna say, couldn't we make it like the same block? So anyone on this section?
Something like that, or yeah, within so many feet, you, you could regulate how far off-site we allow. It has to be something other than content.
The concern I have is without that restriction, we could have anybody wanting, there could be 40 signs on that corner, and it would just really, I disagree with the Council on Shane, I think it looks bad, it's cluttered, it's kind of a safety issue, really.
Well, it's cluttered if it looks like that, yeah.
Yeah, what's, who's to stop that?
Well, if you look at the example there, you couldn't fit more than two in that space if you tried, it's too small a space. But I do like the idea of limiting it to one block or something very concrete and specific to get around what we're talking about here.
Is it limited somewhere? Does it say to, I don't remember reading that it's only sandwich boards, only this kind of?
Yes, so there is a section in the code that talks about the material design and size standards for signs in the public right way. It requires that it be T-frame or A-frame structures composed of wood, plastic, or metal with the, as previously discussed, size limits.
Sounds like this is going to be our future discussion.
Well, it sounds like what, if we can kind of summarize what the council wants here, it sounds like you want to have a limit to the number of signs per corner, and a limit to businesses within. Well, it sounds like what, if we can kind of summarize what the council wants here, it sounds like you want to have a limit to the number of signs per corner and a limit to businesses within, say, 200 feet of the placement of the sign.
Well, a block is 100 feet, right?
No, blocks are usually a couple hundred feet.
Couple hundred feet, yeah.
Do we want to do it in terms of number of feet? Or just say a block?
I think number of feet is probably better because we probably, I don't know how we define block in the development code. So, I would just limit it to, you know, 100, 200 feet from the placement of the sign.
I think we would have to do that as far as location, because then, why couldn't a company in Monmouth drive over here and put a sign? Or go to, get up early and go to every single corner? And, you know, they're nowhere near here. They're drawing business away that way.
I clearly did not read the code before I got here. I read this. I just want to be honest. I didn't read the code.
You didn't read, you didn't read the entire book?
I didn't. That's what you're for. Thank you for knowing this and knowing how to look it up. Do we prohibit balloons and streamers and crap?
So, balloon signs are prohibited.
And what about these guys?
24 inches or larger in diameter. The wacky waving arm inflatable tube man. We prohibit signs that move. So, they're sent that the sign that moves.
Except for the ribbon ones, right?
The feather signs.
The feather signs, yes. Those are permitted.
But it's limited to two or three? There's a limit on the number of other signs.
Yeah, same as limit on the size of them, because they come in different sizes, some of them quite ginormous. Feather signs are permitted, though, within those standards.
There's also a lineal foot spacing standard for those signs. So, Lane, I have a question. If we put in a code provision that says you can have, you know, signs on corners and you, but you have to be located within so many feet. And then, we also include the prohibition on off-site signs. Does our code, because those are conflicting standards and the most restrictive standard applies, come into play? And those signs are prohibited?
We've been declared that the exception for off-site applies to this particular type of sign that meets this particular criteria. Otherwise, we don't allow off-site.
Yeah, you'd want that to be in the language.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're clear on that, yeah. Are there other things that the council wants us to consider in revised language? All right, good.
Any more questions?
Okay, next item, Chase.
Moving on. So, next item we have is cottage cluster developments. So, we took some guidance from the DEQ, TGM publication, Character Compatible Space-Efficient Housing Options for Single-Dwelling Neighborhoods, published back in 2016. Fascinating read, if you haven't had the chance to read that. It offers several different approaches to missing middle housing, cottage clusters being, being one of them. We do allow cottage clusters in all of our residential zones. Cottages, in this case, are defined as essentially single-family homes that are 1,200 square feet or less on the same lot with a maximum of four cottages on one lot. From the case studies, that's a really low number. So, the proposal here is to increase the maximum number of cottages on a property up to 12, more consistent with some of the best practices that we've found in these kind of publications. For those who aren't familiar, missing middle housing is that kind of housing type that sits between your single-family home and your big, like mid-rise apartment complex. So, it's things like duplexes, townhomes, fourplexes, those sorts of middle sort of density types. And so, courtyard housing or cottage clusters being one of those types of housing was reasonably common back in the 20s, 30s, 40s. As post-war zoning kind of came into fore, it kind of went by the wayside, as did most of those other middle housing types. So, there has been kind of a national resurgence to try and reintroduce those, those more affordable, more middle-density kind of housing styles. But specifically with regards to the cottage cluster, again, the proposal is to allow up to 12 cottages on a, on a single property. Again, each cottage being 1,200 square feet or less. So, don't know what sort of discussion planning commission or city council kind of wanted to have here, but certainly happy to facilitate.
So, to be clear, what's changing here is the number, the density, the number that we're allowing?
That's the core of the change, yes. Yep.
Why the .75?
Because of the size limitation. It's not, you know, your full-size house, it is limited in size, but it's bigger than an ADU, which is classed at 50%. So, .75 seemed a reasonable midpoint. Kind of arbitrary, admittedly, but...
Split the difference.
In our single-family detached lots, is 1,200, 1,200 square foot still one, right?
Yes. So, if you're, if you're doing a single-family detached home, whether it's 600 feet or 6,000 feet, if it's a single-family home on an individual lot, it's a single-family home, no matter how big it is. This is specifically when you have multiple dwellings that are on a single piece of property. So, you can't really sell them individually. They're not on their own individual lots. They may be under condo ownership, where, you know, the actual, you know, walls of the units are owned individually, but the land is owned in common by the HOA, the condo association.
Because this .75, I'm not on that side of the development company.
Okay.
So, but does this penalize building these compared to a single-family lot? Because there's a point structure, correct? I don't remember what this...
So, the key benefit of this is going to come in two forms. One is that you don't have to divide the land, and so then, you don't have the dimensional requirements of land divisions. You also don't have internal property lines, so the setbacks can be much, much better. So, it's not necessarily, I would think, a penalty. It's, as far as density goes, it's equivalent to like a two-bedroom apartment. We also count those as .75. So, if you can fit an apartment building onto land, I would think you could still fit cottage clusters.
Yeah, well, I've built thousands of square foot houses that are three-bedroom. So, I was just, didn't know if it was penalizing the developer, because I know, you know better than I, this is what you're, it's confusing to me why, what do we want in one?
I have a lot of questions. All of them are fire questions, and I don't know if you can answer them, but I'm going to make sure that I get them out now.
Okay.
What is the amount of, how many feet apart are the units going to be allowed to be?
So, because they're all one property, zoning code doesn't specify setbacks between buildings. That comes from the fire code. My understanding is that if they're less than three feet, there is a requirement for fire separation walls. Fire code would allow you to build houses right up against each other, as long as you have the proper fire ratings. Development code wouldn't allow that, because then it's a, not a, then it's an apartment building instead of individual cottages.
So, when it's not a contiguous roofline, then we, as a city, would be saying yes to 12 on the single lot, when and only when it meets all applicable fire code?
Oh, yes. Certainly the...
Not all cities do that, so I'm just making sure. Okay.
Yeah, so with the cottage cluster, really, the waivers to code standards are more on the development, are all on the development code side. All applicable building codes, fire codes, you know, the plumbing, electrical, all that stuff, would need to still be complied with, with the cottage cluster.
Okay. So, I'm not going to ask any more fire questions, but I have one other question. How many water meter bills would be on this? Would it be one or 12?
You know, that, I don't know the details, so I'd have to consult with Public Works on that.
And finance would know. So, like an apartment building, for example, and Cecilia, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but an apartment building that has 12 units, right? Even if they have one meter, they get 12 bills. And so, a cottage cluster would be treated the same way.
And what would that mean for, unless asking about the bill and then more asking about the fee that comes on that bill? So, it would be times 12, not times one? Okay.
Apartments get one meter.
Right, they get one meter. But the fees, the fees are charged by the number of units. So, that would be the same here, right?
So, the city would be collecting based on the number of units built on that lot?
Correct.
Not collecting based on one lot.
Right. So, like the stormwater fee, the public safety fees, those are collected per unit.
And then, the water meters would be done during the development period. The only cottage cluster I've ever been involved in had separate water meters for every house and separate meters. For electrical, electrical meters on a condo plant, they'll have to be in one location. So, you have this bank of, and same with water meters, they're all in one location near the street.
I am worried about these kinds of developments and how we keep people safe when there's not enough space. If I'm, I'm going to push this to you. If I'm, my house is right here and his house catches fire, so's mine. And even if I'm right here and his house catches fire, but our shared lot is full of crap, because we don't have any place to put our crap, now I'm going to be on fire too. So, I'm happy to hear that we are going to be adhering to all fire code. Great. That was my question.
Fire code works very well.
When it's all...
Yeah, this doesn't undercut it in any way.
Yeah, buildings never catch fire.
I think these are adorable. It reminds me of a movie I saw that was, I don't even remember what was set, European, but cute little town, you can drive in the middle of it. My issue would be, it's probably not going to look that cute. I'm more picturing awful tract housing shoved on a lot, crammed together.
Tiki-taka houses.
And that creeps me out. If it's adorable like this, I love this. I think that's great, but there's no way to require that it be cute. I know that sounds stupid, but...
No, it doesn't.
But there are ways.
So, we don't really have much in the way of design standards for cottage clusters, separate from just the standard design standards that would apply to any residential development. Certainly, if the council wanted to pursue some kind of design standards, that's something that we could investigate. The trick there is that the more regulations you impose, the more difficult it becomes to build. Granted, in, in all the years that we've allowed this in our code, which is based since 2010, no one has actually built a cottage cluster here. So, what does it matter if we add more regulations if they're not building it anyway?
Yeah, my concern is trash accumulation and disposal of trash, you know? Are we going to have like 50, 25 trash cans? Is a trash truck going to be able to go down to those main streets?
So, cottage clusters, they're required to adhere to the same standards as apartment complexes in that regard. They have to have a centralized trash enclosure. Centralized meaning like one, not like in the center of it, but like one location where all the trash goes. So, there would not, in theory, be, you know, 20 different garbage cans all around. It would just be one dumpster, just like an apartment complex.
Best way to think of this is like an E toilet, a microwave toilet, because a condo plant is regulated by the condo association.
Chase, is there anything about parking?
So, that, yes. The parking code standards do, let's see. Yeah, so, I forget, were we adding? Did I do it, did I do an oversight in preparing the staff report? So, we do, for multifamily uses, the apartments, we do specify parking requirements based on the number of bedrooms. And we don't really change that in the proposal. So, yeah, I would, I would imagine that the cottage clusters would still fall under the multifamily category for parking requirements.
So, what would something like that look like in terms of parking requirements?
So, for multifamily, a one-bedroom unit or a studio requires one parking space. A two-bedroom unit requires one and a half parking spaces. And then, a three-bedroom or larger is two parking spaces.
So, in this particular pot of 12, it's a minimum of 12, if they're all one-bedroom?
Right. If they were all one-bedroom and you had 12, then that'd be 12 parking spaces.
Off-street.
So, there is provision in the code for on-street parking, along the street frontage of the property to count towards the requirement. But yes, and otherwise, if there's no off-street park, if there's no on-street parking available to count, then it would be off-street parking, yes.
So, say you wanted to do 12, 1,200 square foot cottages. What size of a lot would you need? Because I feel concerned about having too much cram into one place.
Right. So, that's where the density equation comes in. And so, that's under the housing density section, where we're saying, when you're calculating how many units you're allowed to have per acre, each one counts as .75 of a unit for the purposes of that density calculation. So, you do get to cram a few more of them onto the property than you would if they were just a full one-to-one. As far as minimum lot size specified in code, we do specify a minimum for multifamily and cottage clusters. For the low-density zone, the minimum lot size is 12,000 square feet. That's not to say that you could fit 12 units on 12,000 square feet, because 12,000 square feet is how many fractions of an acre, right? So, there is some math involved to figure out what the maximum allowable density would be. And then, how you would actually lay that out in terms of including the required buildings, the parking, the open space, setbacks from the outer property line, building separations for fire code. So, there's a lot of engineering that goes into that, then, based on size of property, dimensions, you know, configuration. It's hard to answer that...
It's not like we can take a half acre and cram 12, 1,200 square foot, you know, or eight or...
Right. Because in the RL zone, your maximum is nine per acre. So, if you had a half an acre, right, you'd have half that number. And then, each cottage counts as .75 towards that limit, so...
So, in that case, Chase, doing the math, if you have a nine-unit density per acre, you have a half acre, let's do the math really simple. So, you have a, you have a one-acre lot, you're able to get, you know, about 11 units instead of nine on that acre. Or if you have a half acre, you're getting six as opposed to four.
At 1,200 square feet?
At 1,200 square. At 1,200 square feet. I mean, they can be smaller. They just got to be more than that. Yep. So, well, that's, those are the challenges for the engineers to figure out how to fit all of the other things on the site.
So, you said, if they're smaller, you can have more. Is there a maximum of 12?
You can't, you can't have, you can't have more. You would have more room between the units, right? But your density for each, each of the cluster cottages, no matter how big or small they were, is .75 of one, one unit, meeting the density of nine units per acre in the low-density zone.
A question for Lane. You ready for this one? I asked Brian and he kind of didn't know. With the new state laws requiring no parking for apartment buildings, does this go over to cottage clusters?
I don't know. Ask a good question, man. Look at it.
Have they enacted that law?
It was passed. I can't remember the...
It's enrolled.
Yeah, I can't remember the timing on that, which is why I also didn't know. So, I'm happy to know our local council...
Yeah, so there's so many proposals that come out each year, it's impossible to keep track. I only pay attention to the ones that get enrolled.
If there is an applicable state law, it would preempt our local code.
Who does our plans review again? Our fire plans review?
So, our fire, our fire plans review is done by contract with the Polk Fire Number One.
Okay. So, they would, let's pretend that the building with the orange lighthouse in the middle, that's what they're going to build. That's what's coming. So, state would come in, our state, sorry, our contractor would come in, they would review this, and they would be able to say, if the house that you, you can't really see is kind of back in the corner, that one catches fire. And the only place to park, of course, in this little picture, the only place the firetruck's going to park is way out here. They have to have enough hose, they have to carry, they have to run all that hose back to that house.
Usually, just so you know, this usually wouldn't pass, because if you go to the one on the left, that little pathway going through the middle of the houses is usually an entrance to the courtyard for the firetruck. There's usually a fire lane that comes... that comes right in the middle of them. That's all done during planning, and it's also done with the review of the fire, with the fire review.
Yeah, fire code requires that they be able to get a hose within 150 feet of, of the backside of the property, or you have to be able to get the truck within 150 feet of the backside of the property. There are certain exemptions for that if you have, say, fire sprinklers. So it's not a hard and fast rule, but in general, that's, that's the requirement.
And then with that one, they would start fireproofing the sites. You'd be going to wild holes.
I mean, frankly, if we had a code that said all cottage clusters that are more than three on a lot need to include sprinklers, I'd stop asking questions.
If we had a, if we had a code that required all single-family homes to have fire sprinklers, there'd be two single-family homes that would not have burned down recently, so...
That's right.
You follow the state fire code.
Yeah, and, and the important part to remember is that going to, from, you know, two to four to two to 12, sounds like a lot. There's, all the code requirements, the safety code requirements, building code, fire code, still have to be met. There are ways for that to happen, and that would be required as part of a development application. And, you know, concerns of, you know, hose length, hose drag, you know, access, all that would be determined through plan review processes. And so the question really for tonight is, is 12 the right number? Do you feel it should be less? Should we go from two to eight, or something less than 12? And is the .75 the right number of units to enable a little bit more than just a single-family house-type development?
And if it helps your consideration, there is no spacing standard as far as how far these have to be from one another. So you could have several lots right next to each other, each with the maximum number on them. There's nothing that would prohibit that, so...
You'd probably still have attached, too.
I mean, you could, you could do that, yeah. Yep, they could be under the same ownership, developed together concurrently, but they're separate lots, and so the standards apply separately.
Yeah, so, so a similar, an example in town of a cottage cluster style development are the townhomes that are over in Bridalwood. It's on a single lot, and you have about six clusters of attached townhouses on a single lot, right? So this type of development has occurred within the city limits, albeit the clusters are in attached-style housing units, but you have, you know, six townhouses here, and then another four over there, and then another eight over here, all on a single lot. So we have an example of cluster development. Now, that took place before the development code existed and land use laws were a thing, but there's some precedent of this being built in the city of Dallas already at densities that are probably similar to what we're talking about.
So I have a question before we get to the size and shape and quantity. Is this something that developers are currently asking us that they want to develop, to do these types of developments here?
I would not say that it's a question that we get very commonly asked. I will say that if some of your objectives as a council from a policy standpoint are to have, you know, more affordable housing option types available in your code, this is a good change you can make, that if a developer wants to build something like this, they can. But it's not something we get, you know, developers pounding on our door saying, hey, we want to see this. But, you know, from a policy standpoint, this is a pretty easy win with assurances that you're not going to build unsafe housing units, you know, inside the city limits to be able to get more of that middle affordable housing, more affordable housing built.
Yeah, I don't think this is going to open the floodgates.
Well, no, and I'm failing to see that this would be all that affordable. I mean, consider if you want truly affordable housing, a 1,200 square foot house in a cute little private area and all of that, that's not going to be cheap. I mean, we're not talking about lower-income housing.
This isn't, and I want to clarify, I'm not talking about low-income housing. It's more affordable than a single-family house on, on a, on a standalone lot than that house is 2,000 square feet.
And, and much more affordable for the city. Building of roads is incredibly expensive for developers. Maintaining of those roads and those utilities into perpetuity is incredibly expensive on the city. So the more utilities you can have on the private side, the more affordable it is for the city in the long term.
Unless street furniture.
Chase, are you through for now, or?
Yes. If you want to move on to the next subject, we can certainly do that.
I'm one more concerned about this very quickly.
You need to wrap up by quarter till.
Yeah, we'll, we'll finish up on this topic today, and then we'll bring the next topic in future, once the future meeting, but go ahead.
So on this, one of my big concerns is what I hear from the community in person, online, on Facebook, emails, what people are so concerned with is the amount of residential people moving in without infrastructure and, and a lot of our classrooms. I can tell you firsthand, they're getting crowded. So I fail to see crowding in more people right now. Now, granted, I realize we cannot put a moratorium on a residential building. I understand that law very clearly. This seems like a very, very low concern, and if the majority of people are really concerned about too much development, this would just irritate them more, is my opinion.
Well, only if somebody actually built.
Well, there is that.
But the more and more, I mean, I hear it all the time in, you know, out and about in businesses, online. People are concerned about, you know, more and more overcrowding here and overcrowding, and, you know, we want to stay a small town. Granted, we're not going to stay tiny. We want growth and development, but I think we need to focus on business and jobs and education and things like that, infrastructure, to be able to support the faster pace of growth. I think we're outgrowing ourselves here is what I'm, what I'm hearing from the community.
Yeah, so what does the council want on this? Do you want to keep two to 12? Do you want us to come back with a lesser number? A lesser number?
That's my opinion.
Okay.
I don't speak for everybody.
How does, how does the council feel when I say the number nine?
Yeah, I'm okay with eight or nine.
Six, five, Carlos?
I like six.
I would, I would weigh in on nine to six. I think the 12 or above is going to create a big social problem with a lot of people close to each other. There would be, in my opinion, there'd be quality-of-life issues, log noise complaints, residents' complaints, and it would tax our police department, probably.
All right. Quick, quick. You're at 12,000 square feet max or min?
Maximum.
Maximum. And so my only concern, we're not, I have no plans on building any of these, but you're taking and making sure that none of these will be built, and the affordability of the houses, Kirsten just asked, if the affordability, these would be less expensive in my experience to purchase out. So the fewer that you have on a bigger lot, the more expensive, so you're increasing housing prices. You have to consider that.
So the, the TGM guide that I referenced previously, their recommendation was 16 on a lot, and several of the examples that they gave, including the ones that were in the staff report, were 16 or more. And so I kind of cropped some of the images to make them look a little smaller in the staff report to kind of match our proposal.
And that's close to what we're seeing in high-density right now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think the staff's recommendation would be between nine and 12. If you're feeling uncomfortable with nine, I would recommend as a staff person, nine, as opposed to six. Six just doesn't get you there. It's going to be more expensive, and no one's going to build it at that, at that rate. And so you're going to continue to see either apartments and/or single-family housing and cottage clusters while they're in the code wouldn't be built.
Or they do two lots side by side, in which case you've still got 12, and what's the difference? Now there's a property line through the middle.
Yeah, there's, there's ways of kind of getting around it, but...
Are we through?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we'll, we'll bring back a smaller number, and that's good. So I think we'll hold off on the last topic, the multi-use paths, for the next meeting.
Okay.